The September 202022 Special Meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at
6:38.
At 6:38 PM, we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by our new Deputy Clerk. What's your name, sir?
Juan Escuel.
Okay. So if everyone could please stand up and face the flag. Go ahead, sir.
Right over there. Your hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'm going to ask my city council colleagues to please face the audience while the roll call is being called, please. Everybody please stand, just face the audience.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Here.
Councilmember Valentine.
Here.
Mayor Potem Patterson.
Mayor Vargas.
All members present, thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember colleagues. So, why are we meeting today here at the memorial center? And as you all may remember, back in June, we had a study session that was comprised of the city council colleagues, my city council colleagues, members of the business community, and most importantly, members of the Hawthorne community, the residents, the voters, and those who live here. So as a compilation of all the information from that meeting, we are going to have a direct report from the consultant that helped coordinate those meetings, that meeting actually, it was a single meeting, and he's going to be talking to us and presenting directly to the city council. So this is a different type of meeting, which calls for an actual formal special meeting or regular council meeting, but we chose to do it in a special meeting format so that those who could come at a later time and on a specific date could make it. Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, okay, Mr. Clerk. Okay, so, everybody should understand the nature of this meeting, so if there's anybody who wishes to address the city council, start lining up. Where's the microphone? It's right up here. Okay, can you read the guidelines, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to Government Code Section 5494.3, the public should directly address the legislative body concerning items that have been described in the notice of the special meeting agenda.
Is there anyone who wishes to address the city council?
Hi, good evening. My name is Ruben Sanchez. I'm with the North Hawthorne Community Association. First of all, I'd like to say that it's a great job that we're doing something like this. I recall we did this probably like around 10 years, 12 years ago. I'm hoping it's different, it's not the same paperwork that we used years back. But one thing that I know that we were talking about in the past, when they started talking about investors, they always meant developers. And that's something that our city doesn't need anymore. We don't need developers. We need real investment. We need real corporations, real companies. Everybody thought that SpaceX was going to come in and, oh my God, we were all going to be involved. Hell, we got something in the middle of Hawthorne with a big space shuttle. But SpaceX is not involved with us. They haven't invested anything, not even in our schools, with our communities, or even in the cities. These are the things that we need to be looking forward. Developers only bring high-density apartments. And whoever's endorsed by developers should be looked into that, that that's the kind of investment that they want. We don't want that. The community does not want that. We want real investor, real companies, real businesses. That's what we need out here. You know, because we, you know, we have people that give out free things. That's good. That's nice. That's charity work. But what we need to start giving out is free financial guidance towards the youth as well. This way, we can start bringing in the youth into investment. This way, like 20 years from now, we'll have kids up here who probably make a better plan than what we're going to be doing here. That's what we need, but no one's working on that. Nobody had even talked about that. You guys rather stay in a disadvantaged title and maintain that way. That's something that we should be talking about. Those papers up there should be saying, how are we going to get away from the disadvantaged title that we've been given for many years? That's what we're talking about, because that only going to, once again, that only supports and helps developers who want to develop high-density apartments and nonprofits from our communities. That's it. That's pretty much what it does. The minute we start working and getting away from this disadvantaged, poor community, this guy give out free turkeys every Thanksgiving, we're never going to get away from this. We need to start thinking more ahead. We need to start thinking progress and making sure that our children are going to stay in the city where it's worth staying, not just turn around and we're going to be over there at the RFK where they're going to be building like all these high-density apartments only because they were able to bring in the right people into the council. That's what we don't want. That's what the community doesn't want. We can't be just focused on nonprofits. We can't just be focused on giving things away, because like I said, we need to be focused on financials. You know, if you want, hey, maybe Mr. Montero can help out some of the community, tell them this, how to start our own nonprofits. You know, you have, I think, about four or something?
That's three minutes.
That's something that we should be talking about.
Three minutes.
That helps out. Just saying that.
Thank you for your comments.
That could be helpful. You know, I would like a Tesla, too.
All right, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Anybody else wishing to speak? Okay, I see no one else further wishing to address this councils, so if there's no objections, I'll declare oral communications closed. So ordered. Item one is the Strategic Studies for Economic Development by William Kelly, President and CEO of Kelly Associates Management Group. Mr. City Manager, can you please introduce?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Tonight's a very special night, I think, for the city. We have a gentleman here that's very knowledgeable. He has 14 years of city management in the Arcadia, Yobalinda, and Burbank in management. We met, we convened June 22nd and had a town, Town Home Meeting regarding some of our threats, strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities, which is SWOT, I kind of did it out of order, but it's a SWOT exercise. We had 35 to 40 people here, and it actually was very well done. I'm happy to have staff here, happy to have some of the individuals from the last meeting here, and to recap what's behind the papers here. So what we're going to do, we're going to review the information that was presented from the Town House Meeting, Town Home Meeting, and come to a strategic idea on how we're going to move forward as a city. I think it's very important that we look at what we're doing, that the city is in a very, very good position right now. How do we keep that position? How do we keep the revenue that we have here? How do we maintain that? How do we look five years forecasting how we're going to maintain those funds, that revenue, and how do we balance expenditures that are coming to the city? So I look forward to reveal what we came up with, and hopefully council can have some great questions to pose to our consultant. Further ado, I'd like to introduce William Kelly, our consultant. He's going to lead us in the right direction and give the council the appetite to give direction to staff, how to move forward in the next five to 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Vaughn. Mayor and City Council, as you've already outlined, the goal, strategic planning for the city, but I want to refer to this graphic on the wall. It's a process. The process is you've got a mission, you've got a vision, and you've got some goals, those you've already adopted. Well, you're now into the next phase. So it's gone from suggesting policy to some implementation. So tonight's focus is to walk through, if you recall, I interviewed all of you and some of the department heads, I got feedback on the SWOT from all of you. We had the same thing at the community meeting, and what we're going to show you is what you said and what the community said, to see, is there consistency of your vision and their vision? The process, basically, tonight, we'll be going through a discussion of what the SWOT information is. But prior to that, I want to do something that I usually do for community meetings with elected officials, is we do a communication exercise. Now, why is that important? I think you all know that I'm a professor at USC, and what I teach is organizational development and team building. Most organizations can process things very, very smoothly. One of the USC professors says, the American institutions have great management and no leadership, because we're not sure where we're going all the time. But what causes that? Usually, it's communication. You all don't talk at the same wavelengths. We're listening when other people are talking. So I have a very simple handout that I'm going to talk about, that can talk about who you are, and I think the whole audience can appreciate this, because it's not that complicated, and it's birth order. And the birth order review is where you were born in your family. You were oldest, middle, youngest, your siblings, what was the structure of your family? Now, this is not a new study. Been around for a century at least. Is it a perfect system of analysis? No, but it's been proven to be pretty close to being accurate in terms of who you are, and then you learn about who your peers are. So that's a process. Now, birth order is okay to, in a simple context of unless the family, you have an older child, and then a much younger child, and the younger, and the older child's gone already, gone to college. So the younger child is almost all by themselves. So there are some variations. So I want you to raise your hand when I ask about your birth order. I assume you all know your birth order. Okay. Who are the oldest children in the room?
In their family, right?
In their family. Okay. So we have two council members? Did two of you raise your hand? Only one? Okay.
Is it only amongst the council members?
No, it's everybody in the room. But I want the council members to look at themselves and the team, so one. Okay. These are characteristics. They seek adult approval. They're aware of authority and its expectation of us. They're aware of what's right and wrong. They need for constant feedback, very organized, structured, task-oriented, like routines, insistent on the right way of doing things, seek consistency, morally righteous, need to do and be right, and I love this one, keep number one on top. Cautious of things new, fear of failure, bit of a perfectionist, the leader, the boss, and independent in those areas they do well in. So firstborn children, is this close to you? Okay. Who are next to the oldest? The second born of five, second born of, okay. Has anyone done this before? Should I ask this question? No one? Okay. Next to the oldest, now you have to be my age to understand this description. It's the Avis complex. There are, we try harder. This goes back to the rental car commercials way back, Avis and Hertz. Hertz was always number one, Avis number two, always. Next to the oldest is aggressive, opportunistic, willing to take risk. They will often become opposite of the firstborn, competitive, nothing to lose, everything to gain, and can de-throne the oldest and take on that role if the oldest is a male and the next is a female. So who were, who were the second, second in families, next to the oldest? Anybody in the room? Okay. Is, so you, is, who are the middle children? No middle children?
Yeah, the middle.
In the middle.
Well, listen. To find middle would be.
Exact middle?
The.
There's four of us, so three.
You would, you'd be in the middle. There's a firstborn, a second, and the third is like the middle, and then there's the youngest. So that's a better description. So we have no middle children, or you fit the middle? Okay.
The middle.
Acutely sensitive, aware of others and surroundings. They will instigate the oldest or younger fighting, then they'll mediate the fight just because they can. They're typically called the devil's advocate in an organization. They're the ones that say, we're doing the right thing, or it's not the right thing to do. They don't have a position, they're just questioning what's going on. Flexible, I love this description, ability to use guilt, and if you run into someone and you're not sure of their birth order, and they're kind of vague and disguise it, it's a middle child. That's a role they play. Who are the youngest in the room? Raise your hand. Okay, lots of youngest. They're the manipulators. They get people to do things for them. As you recall, the baby, push me, carry me, hold me. They make use of youngness. They're actors, actresses, they get animated to get attention. Easygoing approach to life, very people-oriented, social awareness, they read the environment because they have to to survive in the family, and see the big picture. The oldest, when they come home from school, where does their papers go typically? Refrigerator door. The youngest brings something home, where does it go? In the trash can. Everybody's seen it before. The oldest goes to bed at 8:30. Parents said, it's 8:30, go to bed. The youngest, we're going to bed at 8:30, you can do what you want, the rules don't apply. Okay, who are only children? One? Okay. Only is very close to firstborn. Very organized, task-oriented, aware of others. Prefer smaller groups to families very small, obviously. Friendship usually intense, with smaller numbers of people as friends. Little fear of competition, their toy is their toy, there's no sharing. Don't need a lot of people around them all the time, and I love this last description, they make good use of alone time. Okay, now, why do you think this is important? Because we're all different. So if you are, if you see somebody being devil's advocate, things, they're probably the middle child. They're trying to test what's going on. If you see, if you see an oldest, what's their comment? It's my way. I want it that way. The firstborn will get a bicycle and have training wheels on it. You know what training wheels are on the sides, they don't fall over? The second oldest, get those wheels, get those training wheels off right now, I like crash and burn, I don't care. But again, these descriptions aren't totally perfect, but if you think about it, and I have handouts for the council and the public if they want them, this helps you understand who you're dealing with. We're not all the same, and if we don't understand a little bit about each other, we aren't going to be successful. Goes back to my comment, we can process things very well, but are we good listeners and communicators? So, any questions, comments? Yes?
So aren't you trying to, by this exercise, trying to figure out how to best build this team? Because since you know the, what is typically the attributes of each one of us, you also can extrapolate from that, how to get the best out of us and how we can best work together?
That's correct. Yes. I've been doing this enough that I can almost figure out people's birth orders by a few conversation with them. But the more you do this, the easier it is to understand each other for that same reason. And my experience is city councils are the ones that need this first, it's the very first meeting to be a team. A team requires communication, and it's very important. In tough times, who are you, whom I dealing with? Who are you dealing with is where it's important. So let me, let me have this passed out.
So where do you put a child that is seven from nine children?
Good, a problem.
The seven child of nine.
Any big age gaps in between? So what is the age gap from you and your siblings above you?
About 18 years.
Okay. Well, you're closer to a middle and an only in that category, because you've grown up in a, in a broad spectrum of age groups. So it's, again, it's not rocket scientist, not 100% perfect, but there's some characteristics that will apply. Okay? I forgot to do one thing, I didn't introduce the executive vice president of our company. This is Christine Kelly. Obviously, that's my wife. So she was here during the community meeting to help facilitate, so. Let me, let me have her pass some of these out. So the council will have their copy, and there's some extras if anybody in the audience wants a copy. For those of you here in the audience, take this home tonight and talk to your significant other and see if they test correctly based upon what you now know about them. So that's a challenge. The next thing I want to do is. Talk about the city's financial position. Now, we did some of this in the community meeting, some of these charts were from the community meeting. By one of the most illuminating charts was this property tax dollar bill. As I explained at that community meeting, most people don't understand what their property tax pays for, and as the council will see and the community will see, as you divide a dollar bill up as to who gets what money, the city of Hawthorne only gets about nine and a half cents of that dollar. Not, they don't get the full dollar, nine and a half cents, and that's what is one of your big, big property, that's one of your big tax producers. So that's not a lot of money in the context of what everybody else is getting. This chart here, you can come and look at it later, deals with the revenue forecast from property tax, sales tax, your hotel bed tax, TOT, and then the utility tax. You can see these charts, and where the dollars are going up and not moving at all. So this is just an indication of where your revenue stream is coming from. Now, this is a critical chart. This is a projection for five years of your city budget, going from where you are and going out five years. The green line is your revenue. The red line is your expenses. So you see a line crossed right there. About mid 2025, right in that area, your expenses will start exceeding your revenue stream. That's a, that's a difficult position to be in, when you're spending more than you're taking in. So when you project out, this is the finance director did, you've got a gap in 2627, your expenses are 114 million, and your revenue is 109 million. And these are, these are conservative numbers, you know, with the recession and everything else going on. But we want to present this to you because this is your reality, and this is the reason you want to talk about economic development. What are you going to do about this? What plans are you going to take to prevent those lines from crossing? And you really have two choices. You either find more money, or you end up cutting services. There's not a lot of alternatives, unfortunately. That bullet is coming at you, and there's a lot of cities facing the same bullet. You aren't alone, with retirement pension bills coming, there's all kinds of things. But this is a reality for the city of Hawthorne, where you're going to end up if you just continue the way you're going. Does anybody have any questions on that? The finance director is here in case you have questions, but this is her best estimate right now as to what's going to happen in the next five years. Yes?
Without making a big long question to answer, though, it looks like the expenses are on a steady trend, no major change, but it looks like there's kind of a flex in the income. I'm just kind of curious what the rationale was in projecting out the income or the revenue? Just the rationale in projecting out the revenue?
So for our major sources of revenue, which are property tax, utility, users' tax, TOT, and sales tax, those are our major sources of revenue, so we use our consultants' estimates, they're experts in their field, they track businesses, what they report, they track the property values, and so those, those revenues are pretty clear that the consultants give us the best information. On all of the other revenues and expenditures, we look back at the history of where the city has, has had the expenditures fluctuate. So over the last, obviously, three years with COVID, we've had some increases and decreases that have taken us off balance. So we look at the trend, we look at the history, and then we look at the current financial situation, and that's how we estimate our expenditures and where they're going to be.
So what's expected to happen in 2324 that changes the trajectory of our revenue?
2324, so as we have always done in the past, we estimate, this is our budgeted year, our current year. We always budget a very conservative figure. This, these are what our, what we hope that our revenues will be, what our consultants have given us as their expert analysis, as where the revenues will be, and after tracking the expenditures, we show where we expect those expenditures to be. There's nothing that's going to happen that's out of place. We are, we're giving where we expect it to be. This is obviously not our budgeted amount. So next year, when we start to calculate the 2324 budget, we will, we will look at our actual numbers that have come in as estimates, and then see if this number is, is near where we expect to be. So it'll depend on the departments, they'll look at their budgets, they'll also look at where they need to be, what projects need to be completed, and this may be higher than what, what they expect or need, and so that number will be adjusted as we get to that budgeted year.
This is our discretionary.
Correct.
Budget, right?
Correct.
And remind me, is, what was our projected revenue for 2223? Is that 88,000 was on our budget?
Correct.
Got it. Or 88 million, I'm sorry?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick question?
Yes.
All right. I think he asked it, but maybe I'll ask it in a different, in a different manner. There's a change in the slope, a decrease in the slope right there. So 2324, there has to be some major event, some major forecast for you to have changed the slope in the.
From here to here, you mean?
Yeah, and why is it, why you forecast?
This is, this is depend, this depends on where the economy is. So our experts, again, our consultants, are telling us that based on where the economy is headed, there could be a flattening out of the curve, right? So we, they're, they're trying to be conservative in their estimates. Because if we were to project way out here and we don't meet these expenditures, then we're going to have a deficit in the budget.
So what rationale did they use that they relayed to you that explained the decrease in the slope? What did they tell you was the reasoning that they thought that there would be a decrease in the revenues? They had to have told you something.
There isn't a decrease in the revenue, they're just being conservative in, so instead of projecting in prior years, we've had revenues that have increased by 10%, by 7%, by 8%. So now we're, because of where the economic situation is currently, they're projecting a 4%, a 3%, you know, 5% rather than that, that large 7% or 8% or 9% that has come in in the past. If next year, they see that the economy is in a better place, then these numbers are obviously going to increase. But right now, in the position that we are, in the economy where it is right now, they can't project any higher than that because it wouldn't be realistic.
Okay.
So I think this can explain better about the revenue, the flow of the revenue in the future. There's a biggest impact, there's a major increase between fiscal year 2223, jumping to 2324, and then it kind of stabilizes. So I think it's kind of, I think the better explanation should be, why is there such a big increase between 2223 to 2324? Because after that, if you look at these bars here, they kind of stabilize. So there must have been some, you know, I don't know what the expert said, but my guess would be that between these, the fiscal year 2223 and 2324, there's been a federal funding that, that's the only thing that I could think of with, with the assistance that we got due to the COVID relief. So I would think that that's the reason why there's a, it's more, why is there a bigger, because this is pretty steady, but why is there a big jump between 2223 and 2324?
Just on the same token, when it comes to expenses, in the year 2526, there's a change in the, increase in the expenses at 2526, upward slope increase, what?
Maybe I can add, the graphics make this look huge. This number to this number is only $3 million. The graphics make it look dramatic, but it's not. If you look at what the mayor just talked about, the, this number here is 101 million, this is 100 million. It's only a million-dollar difference. So I think you could say that. So I think you could say that the graphs exaggerate the issue, but it's all dependent upon, as Felice said, that the percentages that the consultants are suggesting, the GNP and everything else, recession, it's, it's not a crystal ball right now. And, and with the ARPA funds now being terminated, unless that goes back in place, that's what's probably had a big significance despite those numbers. You still have ARPA money.
Do the chair. A real quick question. I, I understand what you're saying, but on the same token, a more presentable, I'm not saying this is from our staff, the consultant should have given us some type of uncertainty, uncertainty bars that went along with this to see how these things overlap. So, I mean, especially since there's members of the council and members of the public who lean on this information to argue for or against projects, and we can do this, we can't do that. So I just think this might be a little misleading if we don't have the uncertainties that go along with both of these lines. Go ahead.
I mean, you make a good point, though. This projecting out four years essentially saying that we're looking at a potential deficit of about $5 million, which is definitely more than possible to address right now for four years out. I mean, I, I think it just takes one new project to kind of, you know, make a major difference in this whole, this whole deal, but...
That's correct. If the feds pump more money into ARPA again, that changes your, your numbers.
Or, I mean, if we start getting more money from our cannabis ordinance, right, that makes, makes the world a difference.
Right. And this is, and this is based upon your present, present flow. It doesn't include cannabis. So whatever that number is, is different.
And through the chairs, also does not include, any other project might come down to pipe, for example, more hotels, more TOT taxes, right? Because then we can put into perspective that in four years, we're going to have a flock of individuals coming through Inglewood, and they're going to stay in some of our hotels. And if we build more hotels, we've got more TOT tax, the Transatlantic Oriental Tax, plus maybe more sales tax because people can be spending more money if we have the restaurants in place, right? So, so it's a dynamic.
Right.
Because right now, they talk about recession, right? That people are saying, we're going to go to a recession. So then that is where that graph is slowing down takes. But then when we start looking at the, at the South Bay, what's happened here, what's happened is going to happen in four years, we're going to have a World Cup, we're going to have the Olympics. So it could bring a lot of flowing people, a lot of income that it would not be expected basis on today's forecast.
And that, and that's the, that's the reason we're in this meeting tonight. What strategies are you going to adopt to try and make sure those kinds of things happen? You know, how do you induce hotels? How do you induce the restaurants, whatever? I mean, I guess in one sense, you could describe Hawthorne right now as a hole in the doughnut. You've got everything around you that's capturing dollars, but when the, when the, when SoFi was built and the NFL game was played there, how much came into Hawthorne in terms of use? Yeah. Because you don't have the attractions. And that's, that's the reason we're talking about this tonight, is what are you going to do differently to move off and, and to prevent this to where the green line just keeps going up? And that's, we, and that's we talk about the strategies. So in one sense, this is paints a bleak picture, and it has to get attention. I think we got the attention. Now we've got to dream big, dream beyond, dream beyond what you've got right now. Thanks, Felice. You've, you've got the mission, the mission statement and the goals, so you've kind of gone through that. We're now to the implementation of strategies. This is what Greg's passing out right now, in case you've forgotten. You did adopt the mission statement, and you adopted goals some time ago. So, this is just to refresh your memories. At, at this point now, we want to talk about what you said to me in the SWAT and what the community said. And you have small copy pages of this just being passed out to you. So the strengths, experienced staff, public safety is a, is a strength, location at 105 and the 405 freeways, good school districts, SpaceX, city airport, proximity to SoFi, close to the beach, hardworking staff, good access to city staff, good city commissions, city departments good at getting grants, great community events, good infrastructure, strong city management team, at present, no fiscal debt, council and community open to ideas for economic development, city is considered hub of, of the aerospace industry, lots of small ethnic restaurants, and receive federal dollars for housing programs. These are pretty significant strengths that you want to build from. So this is the, the total of what the community said basically in that meeting and what the council said. Now let's flip to weaknesses. This list got longer. The community isn't always aware of community events. Not enough restaurants, no entertainment venues, need to improve relationship with the Chamber of Commerce, businesses complain the city is not business friendly, too many projects added to an already list of city council priorities. And this is an effort to define tune priorities in the city. You know, you adopted some priorities in, I think it was April. And so this is to drill down even deeper to make sure you get these priorities completed. And economic development was your first priority at that point in time. Moving on, regional perception about the negative image of the city. City council does not have a common vision, low staff morale, unable to recruit and retain quality employees, inadequate number of staff to do complete staff work, building permit issuances are problematic, no grocery stores in some high population areas, too much strip commercial, old mall site vacant, underutilized and in litigation, no economic development strategy or point person, lack of employee growth and development opportunities, lack of public open space, community center is in need of major renovation, lack of new technology in the workplace, archaic city codes, lack of new housing to foster economic development, city council, deep involvement with city employees, 70% of the community are renters, that's extremely unusual in a community, city council politics, and lack of procedures and policies. So this is, this is the summary. Yes?
Is what you said, 70% of the community are renters, did you say it's extremely usual or unusual?
Extremely unusual. Yes. That's, that's a very, very high number in terms of, well, most communities, they're more stable by property ownership and not rental. Let's go to opportunities. The council comments are in black and the community comments are in red. This is where I talked about the council visions and the community vision matched up. Use SoFi as an attraction to visit Hawthorne, we just talked about that. Do something with the mall, increase property values, get more community involvement, more staff training and development supportive city officials, improve interdepartmental coordination, promote more tech, tech industries to locate in Hawthorne, create a development impact fee, and, and other fees could be looked at in the city, all your fees, encourage more mixed-use development, improve marketing, that's to entice people to come here, remove, renovate the memorial center, renovate restrooms and waiting pools, consider startup centers in and around the airport, review opportunities to increase open space, and enhance infrastructure financial district. This is a new tax method approved by Sacramento about five years ago. It, in one sense replaces what was called redevelopment, uses tax increment to fund public improvements and get projects going. I'm working with a city right now doing just exactly this, to reinvent themselves with this public improvement to get projects built. More opportunities. Review citywide parking fee, make Hawthorne a digital city by reputation, restructure business license fees, analyze cannabis for city programs, expand the South Bay fiber network, encourage residents to use low-speed vehicles for local trips, review city strapping level, staffing levels, excuse me, create a grant writing position, we must build for tomorrow, we should be a community of builders, not obstructionist, update municipal and zoning codes to 21st century, and create a position of, a city position of expediter. Now this is what the council comments were in the community comments. And lastly, what are the threats to achieve these successes? Online retailing, nothing for the used-to-do, excuse me, continued negative public perception, lack of succession planning and management stability for city staff, retention of quality city staff, homeless in city parks, lack of policies and procedures, many new requests from city council overload getting priority projects completed, city council differing priorities, city facing budget deficits when subsidies run out, long unaddressed oversupply of strip commercials, not sustainable, not commuting, not communicating with SpaceX, Ring, Amazon, and other large businesses, cannabis competition from surrounding areas, lack of parking for neighborhood, emergency communication plan not complete, lack of funding for building maintenance or replacements, no emergency funding, 70, excuse me, 70% of residents create a, a lack of stakeholder interest or involvement, basically, the state housing law, SB 9 and 10, projects take too much time to process to get building permits, lack of community participation, lack of succession planning for city staff and institutional knowledge is lost, not enough part-time staff for community activities. Again, this was council comments. So what you've got is a cross-section of input from yourselves and the community. And now the question is, what are you going to do about it? Now, obviously, you can't do all of these things. I'm back to the issue of, you've got to get your priorities in place. You started to establish economic development and permit processing, and some of these are interwoven together, the economic development is strategy, which should be a separate document. And the evolution of this, I'm going to give the council some red stickers to come up here and put your red stickers on, on these two charts. What are the five, most, on these two charts, what are your five most important things you'd like to see worked on? And some of these are very broad, but what happens is, once a council does their five stickers, we get some sense of priority. And it's back to myself and the staff to morph these into specific goals and objectives. These aren't really goals in the, in the structural sense, these are your concepts or ideas. And what I want you to see is at the implementation phase... Last phase, if you wouldn't mind, pass, take one, I'm passing it down, please. We take these, once you prioritize them, and we convert these to goals, and then to objectives, and then to who, what, when, where. That's where it meets the, the process. Yes?
When you listed the opportunities, the weaknesses and the threats, or whatever, yeah, they're not in a particular order, right?
No.
Okay, just so everybody knows.
That's right. Good, good point, Mayor, yeah. This is just, as it was stated, they went on the paper. EIFD? Yeah. It's enhanced infrastructure financial district. It basically replaces redevelopment as a way to use tax increment by freezing the tax base and allowing the city then to sell bonds to do public improvements, which in the other sense then helps development occur. It, it doesn't allow eminent domain, it's simply a tool to take an area in the boundaries and create a financial tool to build public improvements and hopefully to then guide private property to develop. In many cases, cities have inadequate infrastructure, and the developer would have to then pay for that, which makes a project go upside down financially. This assessment district structure is, is like redevelopment, it's a way to finance and get projects to be built. There's probably half a dozen cities in California have adopted it, and another, another large number studying it right now. The question is, what, what example of the city is doing this district right now? The city of Covina is in the formation stage right now. City of Covina, they've established the boundaries, this is a project I'm working on, the boundaries are established, they're running the numbers on the collection of tax increment that could be developed. Once you freeze the tax base, old redevelopment, you freeze the tax base, and any growth above that tax base can be used as a revenue stream to sell bonds, to finance public improvements.
So it involves...
Correct.
So as redevelopment, it's in the state council?
No, you still froze the cities, the base in the city. You froze the city property tax base, the growth, and that growth was used to then acquire property and things like that. This doesn't allow you to acquire property. It only allows you to use the increment you generate to pay for public improvements. It'll stimulate development, but doesn't do the development.
Is that similar to the so-called opportunity zones that came from the federal government?
Somewhat different, but it's, it's got the same concept. How do you stimulate private development? Opportunity zones, but this is a data California program specifically set up to help cities find ways to fund public improvements.
I have a question. Thank you. So far, with what you're presenting here, however, with regards to opportunities, there's a lot of questions that are on these two opportunities lists, a continuance, that need to be coming from department heads, because a lot of it is redundant. And what I mean by that is, you're asking for us to provide an opportunity where we feel it's a priority. However, there's questions and there's answers that can answer that. So versus me just going and saying, oh, I want this, I want that. There's already department heads that are working on these projects and are doing a lot of work, and are doing a lot of grant writing, and making efforts to make those projects work and ultimately come to fruition. However, when you talk about creating a development impact fee, we have an impact fee, don't we? So there's redundant, there's redundant questions that are being posed. So I think it's, it's really not in a, in a, in fair light that we provide a priority when really we rely on the information from the department heads who know best, and more importantly, would be able to project revenue sources for that entity to come to fruition. So I, I have a lot of questions with regards to what's there, and a lot of it is redundant because it comes from the city manager, which he provides a report to us, to the city council on projects that he's working on, statuses, et cetera. And so we rely, I rely a lot on his knowledge and forecasting, and I believe he's doing a great job at that. I don't, I don't necessarily believe that tonight, because tomorrow I'll tell you this priority will change for me. So with all fairness, there's a lot of information there that could be answered easily from departments, and it's just, it's just, it's an ongoing redundancy, I feel.
Okay, I appreciate your comment. I didn't, wasn't aware there was a development impact fee. There is one. Okay, reviewed, okay. And that goes back to your point, it's already, it is there, it needs to be reviewed, but I'm not sure where it is in the process.
There's a lot of them that are there, but I already know how it happened.
Is, I can put it this way, is there anything the council disagrees with on this, that should not be a priority? That may be the worst way of saying it.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Use of SoFi to attract Hawthorne, that's one. Because it's not ours, it belongs to Inglewood. And, and in, in, realistically speaking, I'm, I'm more for what we could, you know, handle and manage. I know that we're looking at Angel City Football Club to build a sport and entertainment center, that's something that I could grab onto and held onto and... That's something that I could grab onto and held onto and, and know that we're working on, right? I can't control anything that happens in Inglewood. And so that's in a sense misleading, even to tourists, to bring them here, and we're not SoFi, we're not Inglewood.
And it may be the way it was stated, use it as a magnet or as a tool. It's kind of part of economic development. You're right on top of it. How do you make that an advantage in terms of marketing? I'll put it that way. So maybe it's a semantics we're talking about here. I understand your question specifically. Is that something you can do? Use it? No. But can you make it part of your economic development strategy for attracting hotels and restaurants? Maybe that's a different way of saying it. Does that make any sense to you?
Yeah. The reason Angel City Football Club came to us is because of the developments around sports and entertainment, especially in El Segundo with the Kings, the Lakers facilities, the Clippers, and then more recently, the Clippers stadium and the Rams and SoFi. So they're looking at other regions in the South Bay to build out. This is just, again, a sports and entertainment venue would be ideal. However, again, I want it to be crafted by Hawthorne, owned by Hawthorne, more importantly, implemented through council, you know, partnership and agreements.
Okay, if I heard your statement, then, are you suggesting that there's a creation of a Hawthorne Sports Center? Or is?
About Vaughn, is it about two years ago, Angel City came to us? Yeah, looking, looking to build a sports and entertainment facility for Angel City Football Club.
Okay. More information is helpful. Thank you. What else would you not want to be on this list? I'll have to go.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So if the council goes up, does it need to be modified, right? Do you want to, if she made a note there, to modify it?
I guess it's possible, yeah. I guess, how many of these does the council disagree with as, as goals, Mayor?
I think I'd like to stick to this exercise that you wanted us to have. I think we just need to understand what, so was this, was this list, the font in black generated by the residents?
The black was primarily the city council and city staff.
Okay, so that's what our perspective is.
And the red was the community.
So I think it'd be worthwhile to go through the exercise that you had. But the reason all these came up is because our staff and our city council are very conscious of all these different areas, and staff is already touching on all of these. So I think we're still going to continue touching on all 24 of these and using them, but I think we just, as part of the exercise is just trying to find out which of these float to the top. And it doesn't mean we're going to disregard the others. I also agree, number one, use of SoFi as an attraction to visit Hawthorne. I don't want to take it off the list right now, but I have a critique about that. I mean, it hasn't, it hasn't been the economic boom.
Well, that's one of the reasons I'm only going to give out five stickers.
Yeah.
Because it's, obviously, it's not important to some of you or any of you, but wouldn't get any red stickers. This is an evolutionary process. What you do tonight, we may need to repeat with you once we synthesize what your overarching goals are. And that goes back to, we're building the blocks. This is the first time you've seen this, so it just needs to try and get in your head, what are your first five priorities? And then work with the staff and department heads to regroup this and go back to council. And that would be more appropriate in that last chart I handed out, the who, what, when, where. That's how it gets done. So this isn't a meeting where you're making decisions specifically on what you're going to work on. This is just to kind of bring it down. You're 30,000 feet. Let's bring it down one more level.
And Hawthorne stands on its own. We have our own economic plans that we have that are separate from SoFi. SoFi hasn't done anything. It's just raised the property values and has displaced a lot of people, you know, in Inglewood, and people aren't happy in Inglewood. It hasn't increased salaries for those. Everybody's still getting paid the same in the restaurants and the shops and everything. So it's like, it really hasn't helped our community as such. But I still want to leave it up there. Maybe one of my council colleagues wants to put a sticker next to that.
Okay.
Still.
Going back to what Vaughn said, if you want to write down some notes on something you think we drilled down, please feel free. This is your process. I'm just trying to facilitate getting you to a plan. If you, and if you think of, if there's another thing you can think to add, write it down.
So for instance, just a little bit more on Angel City. For number nine, that says renovate the memorial center, needs more recreation outlets, Angel City Football Club was willing to renovate the memorial center and free. So that meant no cost to the city. They would build it. They would build it out. And that was my incentive to work with an entity, an organization, to do that. So again, we tried to do a renovation of Memorial Center, maybe, I want to say, 10 years ago, maybe more. The most we got was solar panels. Okay, not to be facetious or jokingly. There, yes, this memorial center is outdated, absolutely. We tried to do more of a conventional use, and that did, that didn't work because of the work that was included. We wanted to open it up for more events at the community center so that we could get monies from that, because at one point, we used to rent out all of the rooms for events, and that was taken away a long time ago. But having said that, there are, there are interests and there's possibilities for private-public partnerships that would benefit the city. And for folks that don't know, these are some of the answers that we could provide them, maybe in another study, more importantly, through the city manager's office, because again, he's being asked to implement a lot. Realistically speaking, if there's dollars or there's public-private partnerships, that could happen. But for the most part, again, I don't want it to be redundant.
Okay. Well, in that case, wouldn't get any stickers. That, so you're taking?
Through the chair.
We got somebody over here and then you. But I hope we're ready to put the stickers up pretty soon, man, so we can keep moving along. Go ahead.
Am I, am I incorrect or the one, oh. Am I incorrect or is the one, "We must build for tomorrow", and the other, and the one below that, "Updated municipal and zoning codes", isn't that the same thing? Because we need to update our municipal and zoning codes so that we can build for tomorrow. Isn't that correct?
That's correct. I mean, this came from the, from the staff and the community. Get your codes updated.
So my thought is, you wouldn't need two stickers for that one, am I right?
No. I mean, they'd almost go hand in hand. The zoning code, in one sense, fits part of it, but it also has to make sure that the Muni code matches up to everything you're doing. And this is no small task either.
Right.
But they go together.
I think that's critical, though, but I, but my question is, would I need two stickers?
No, just one.
Which one, though? Which one is the most comprehensive?
Number 23, in total.
Okay. 23, is that, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have a number on mine.
Oh, sorry. It's update the Muni code and the zoning codes for 21st century.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, in the zoning code, we already know the planning department is working to bring to us some zoning amending and modification and renovation. Now, go back to the SoFi issue. See, this is what sometime, that is what is one of those points, that the council is not at the same footing over here, right? Some of us are on Earth, some of us are in Jupiter. Because SoFi, when you put SoFi there, is to say that Hawthorne could take advantage or have an opportunity to develop business model or business project that could help us with our regional and economic development. Because the city of Hawthorne is not isolated. It's surrounded by cities. And the cities, whatever happened in Inglewood, in Gardena, in Carson, in Torrance, in El Segundo, Manhattan Beach, impact us. So that is what we have to look beyond our borders. What can we see out there that we can bring to our cities to take advantage of those opportunities that is happening next door that is not happening here? But if we keep this mind closed and don't vision a Hawthorne with a better economic develop or even hotel, restaurant, or even, you know, mixed use, for example. Because Hawthorne, that's the way Hawthorne is going to, is going to strive. But if we keep putting nothing and then say SoFi is not helping us, that's a lie. Because our TOT, the hotels, didn't suffer during the pandemic. It was because thanks to the SoFi stay, because people stay in our hotels. So I don't know what these people have been living. They're not in, you see, they're politicians, but at the same time, where they have been living, in Hawthorne or they being somewhere else.
Okay, so, oh, you don't need to slam that. Okay, so I actually agree with Councilmember Montero. I actually agree with him that we should have, take every economic opportunity that we have and available. Okay? And one of the most apparent opportunities is the Hawthorne Mall, is the RFK Hospital. But we're, when we're predisposed to give those opportunities away so that those developers, developers can just build a multitude of high-density housing, that's kind of hypocritical and contrary to everything that was being said right here. And then the owner of the Hawthorne Mall, just buckle and bend over for him too, so he can give us like 2,000 or 3,000 units of apartments? So that's the type of rhetoric that we're hearing on the city council tires from some of my colleagues, who are saying that now they want to take SoFi as an example. So we need?
Mr. Mayor, you went to Vegas with the owner of the mall. I'm going to talk because you always put us down and then you know a lot of stuff. This is democracy. This is not Russia. But let me tell you, you went to, you went to Las Vegas with the owner of the mall a long time ago and take money from him. That is why that must have not been developed.
Okay, you know what? I think we're out of order. You're out of order. If we do not stick to the order, we're going to adjourn the meeting temporarily, sir.
That would be good, because you can rethink.
You know what, sir? Okay, look, you're out of order.
And don't attack us.
You're out of order, sir. You're out of order, sir. That's it. All right. Meeting's adjourned temporarily. The meeting is now back, back in session. Just want to repeat the proper protocol and for the city council members, making sure that everybody here is allotted a time to speak. There aren't any interruptions. When somebody is speaking and has the floor, making sure that everybody's views are respected, or if you have a disagreement, speak at the time at which you're, you have the floor. So we need to make sure we have that. So I believe we've discussed many, and we've kind of veered off the, kind of what your procedure is, sir, and there's a lot of different ideas here, and that's evident in the first half of today. So go ahead with the red stickers, sir.
I think just one thing to clarify. Some of these, you say, are being worked on, and that's true. Unfortunately, it goes back to the allocation of staff and dollars. If, if you think that the zoning code is important, that should be a dot to get done, because that, that really impacts development more than anything else. Even though it's being worked, and I check with Vaughn and with Greg, it's being worked on, but if you wanted a priority, it may take a different level of staff support, consultants, whatever, to get it done. Where, I mean, that's, we're talking about priorities. Probably a lot of these are being worked on. But it's back to my point, the staff is, you got a small staff, and you can't, and they can't do everything. So you've got to get priorities up here.
I just want to make one last comment, just for the general public that might be watching. Item number two says to do something with the mall. Again, the city of Hawthorne does not own the mall. The Hawthorne Mall is not ours. So with all fairness, I want, I want for you, sir, just in your consulting position, to maybe get more familiar with what we can and cannot do with regards to that mall. And there's already history with the mall, so perhaps a briefing with the city attorney, the city manager, but for just the general public, because every time it seems that the community believes that the mall is ours and we're choosing not to do anything about it, and that's not the case. So I think it's important that, that be expressed, whether it's yourself, our, our city manager, especially in these types of settings, these types of settings, because the general public is the one that we're trying to educate on what the council's priorities are. And if we could have maybe said, number two, why we did the first city session, when we did the first city session and that item came up, we should have been able to provide an answer to those individuals so that it's not waste of time for us.
I understand your point, and I understand that you don't own the mall and that there's legal processes going on. I didn't filter anything out, but I understand your point. So let me go to stickers.
It's all pink now?
Okay.
Why do you, you have five reds. Just give us all five reds. Why do you give them the one pink?
I have none of reds.
Oh, okay. No, Vaughn, I'm just silly. Can we go with that? So we get five, we get five dots. Allocate to what is most important to be addressed.
No, I get that. I get that. Yeah. More staff needed. We need more people to help us with that. This is insane. Okay, okay, so, okay, 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 look. two, three. Because you look at staff with unemployment issues, we need staff. No, okay, so that's three, and then right at the end, we're saying, we're contributing to digital restriction. We're already dealing with that, digital restriction. Okay, right here, right here, one, two, three, four. The license fee, we need to rebound the whole people in that department. And then five, I would say, oh. Is this the two?
No, not just the opportunities.
Right, right?
Yeah.
And then I would say, that's four, and I would say, I'll put this as my fifth, but I definitely need the staff first. So there you go, so it's numbered.
Thank you. Update muni and zoning code had four. This got three, I think, with the figure how to deal with that one. I guess three of you still think something needs to be done. The other three was work on a marketing program. And then the other three, it's a three, and then work on the mall. So those are four, three, three, and then some twos. So you don't quite have five. I think we'll have to work on how we move these around to try and get, it might be six priorities since there's no magic to five. Because there's one, two, four, number twos. There's two and two, 20, review city staff had two and build for tomorrow. And it's no magic in terms of we've got maybe eight in total.
Didn't you say that 23 and 22 were one and the same almost? So.
No, they have two. 22 is two.
Yeah, no, but you said, it says ditto above what they mean, so integrates.
You said 22 and 23 were the same, but 23 was more comprehensive, so.
Right, this is much more comprehensive, 23.
So you could substitute it with 23.
Some of these could be mixed together and I think that's the challenge, is to take these overarching goals and, and merge them together and, and then come back with the process. That's why I said it's iterative and it's not quite perfectly science, but I think you did prioritize. I actually bought, brought some additional dots, which I'll be happy to sell in case you want to go up and change your scores, but I think, I think we've run the gamut of what you want to do tonight. I know it's been difficult because you have different positions and philosophies, some is in process, I don't know all of it, I'll work with staff to, to prevent some of the duplication and reference, but some of it's going to go back to how you're going to, who's going to do it? Staff, budget, et cetera. And that's why you've got to get prioritized. I mean, I know right now talking with Vaughn and with Greg, you've got a lot of stuff going on with limited staff resources. So the goal of this is to prioritize everything. Whatever your top projects are, the rest don't get worked on for a while. That's the goal of strategic planning, is to synthesize and refine. You can't do everything, so.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
My, my reasoning for saying do something with the mall, because I think that regardless of the fact that we don't have control over it at this time, it always has to be in the forefront of what we're planning to do. Because that is the, it is, it's the face of Hawthorne, it's what everyone sees when they come into Hawthorne. We, we must always have that as a priority, that we must do something with it, whatever it must be, litigation or whatever, but we must find a way to develop that mall. We cannot let it slip in our list of priorities.
And that may beg the question of getting that back out to the community. The council is interested, here are some limitations, but here are some actions being considered. At least more information may reduce some of the questions of what, what are you or aren't you doing? So I think, I think the discussion about it's confusing, needs to get explained. Okay, I, I appreciate your input. It's now back to the staff and my, our firm to bring back a lot more detail for your consideration, which you'll still have a chance to reprocess and discuss in greater detail. So we've been at it an hour and a half, I appreciate the time. Am I, are you hearing me any better back there or is it still mumbled? I, I keep trying to get it closer. Okay, okay, real close, sorry, I apologize for that, real close. Next meeting we'll get that straight, okay? Mr. Mayor.
Are we good, sir?
We're good.
All right, so Mr. William Kelly has his marching orders with staff. They'll be able to take everybody's input, everybody's input on this council is valuable. And I think the exercise that you had us do, although we kind of didn't see it in the beginning or whatever, it's become, it became apparent how, how our city council thinks and we share the same priorities, it looks like, so we really appreciate your time, sir. Are we, is there anything from staff? Nothing else? Are we good? Anything? Okay, if there's nothing further from council, I'll adjourn the meeting at exactly 8 o'clock.